This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard.
He wants to be the God we go to when we're in trouble. And it seems like every day in our nation, now even in our small community, we have reasons to call on him. So if you could possibly join us, uh, May 1st, uh, forecast and tickets, uh, all you guys are invited because of the generous donation from the foundation. Anybody with the school employees that are all paid for already, and I'll just pass this. I'm working to get you to pass it down to everybody. Appreciate y'all coming. Thank you for giving me a few minutes. Thank you, guys. Appreciate what you guys do. Really, truly thank you for the care.
Alright, at this time, I will call the meeting to order. I entertain a motion to adopt the agenda. First by Dan.
Second?
Second by Jill. All those in favor? And that passes five to zero. Please note Darren's out of the seating for his daughters. Alright, at this time, um, Jill, do you want me to plug the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, at this time, I entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. First by Jill.
Second?
Second by Dan. All those in favor? And that passes five to zero. Next up is recognition. Dr. Bulon.
So, uh, I have a faculty board working in hand. I have some constituents here, so I want to be of occupation, the governor of Missouri. And it says, "We recognize a system of evolving public education that is essential for the future of our standing nation. Whereas local school boards serve as PD, community admin, and children review from the public schools. Now therefore, I, I being the governor of the state of Missouri, hereby declare a March 2025 the School Board of Recognition of the Missouri. And not only from this part of the governor, but from everywhere locally, uh, we appreciate what you guys do. People don't know, the government's school board is a volunteer seat, and, uh, they're elected, uh, for clear terms. And we appreciate all the time and effort, uh, that you guys spend in trying to make sure that the best is due to the school board. So, thank you, guys.
We also had a painting from the side. I think it's jumped off in the mood, so.
Alright, next up is our classified employee. Dr. Bulon.
Goodness, the board would like to recognize Hillary Bulon as an assistant at Cornerstone as the classified employee of the month for this month. Uh, she was recog- she was presented by her administrators who have this to say about her. We are delighted to nominate Hillary to be classified employee of the month. As one of the secretaries of Cornerstone on inventory. She truly is the heart of our campus, ensuring that the front office operates with seamless efficiency while fostering and welcoming and supporting the environment for students, families, and staff. Congratulations to her.
Next up is the MSBA delegates' report. Assistant Dan, are you on here? Tracy, were you there often?
Yes.
Or is it you? Is it you? I think there's, we rolled the video for MSBA.
To the March edition of the very school board association report. We begin this month with a focus on school finances. With very real concerns that our government shutdown in March and uncertain in general of federal funding, there are a few specific actions districts should be taking to claim federal dollars. MSBA's senior director of school finance, Linda Quinnley, explains.
Hello, welcome to this month's board report, and this time, we're going to talk a little bit about finance with you. Very specifically focusing on what's happening at the federal level and state level related to some of our primary grants and funding. So just a key piece of information for you to know is that the recent calls or slowdowns or possibilities of those, um, our federal grant dollars was not about our entitlement grants. Like Title I and special education, those were really more about discretionary grants. And so while we were not concerned about losing those main dollar sources for us, we were concerned about loss of discretionary. The good news is that those have been lifted right now and all money is flowing. But we want to talk just for a second about how to help your leaders to make sure that you're getting all of those revenues and what you do need to be watching. Our greater concern at this point in time is a possible slowdown or shutdown of the federal government, which would then slow down or delay significantly your federal program dollars. Help make sure that you are timely and consistently claiming those federal dollars. So that if there is a slowdown or a shutdown, you don't incur any kind of cash flow delay. The end goal is to have those federal dollars in your pocket as quickly as you can after you spend them. So that if something happens at the federal level and there is a slowdown or a shutdown, you've got your cash instead of the feds having your cash. Keep in mind that as you go into next budget cycle, their allocations will continue to come. The leadership in your district will be watching for those allocations and planning to fully use those allocations. Our recommendation is going to be to continue next year like we're asking you to end this year. And just be really intentional about getting those federal dollars spent, spent early and claimed quickly.
For the best practice is to claim your federal program dollars at least quarterly, if not monthly. Keeping the funds coming in soon after they are spent by the district. Make sure the district spends federal dollars first, saving state and local dollars to use as needed. Contact Linda Quinnley for finance questions and launch your weekly and the MSBA website for updates and information about upcoming financial developments. The MSBA's spring virtual meeting was held recently and featured Dr. Phil Gore, a former Seattle area school board member. Dr. Gore is also a nationally recognized researcher, author, and speaker on school governance. The title of Dr. Gore's presentation was "Building a Culture of Trust." Dr. Gore said that building trust and the work of school boards is critical.
School boards do matter when it comes to public education. In fact, we may matter now as much or more than ever. We are one of those last bastions of local control, local governance. And we are the entity that ensures we're creating a more democratizing student population and not alls to take our place in years to come. Trust is just as important or more important than ever than before when it comes to this sort of. In school board development, we often tell board members that they are stewards of the public's two most precious resources. Their children and their money.
And then last, but certainly not least, it is March, which means it's school board recognition month. All of us at MSBA sincerely want to thank each and every one of you for all that you do. Your hard work and dedication to your schools and communities are appreciated, and your commitment to all students does not go unnoticed. Visit the MSBA website for materials to help celebrate. So with that, thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in April for the next MSBA board report.
Um, we said wanting to sign everything, uh, for members for their continuing education. It's due by April 1st, so they'll get an email. So they'll do it tomorrow. They're going to email from MSDA. One hour. I think Tracy's own, that's me. Watch for those emails. I don't approve of MSDA. Alright, next up is our visitors' forum. We have two speakers this evening. First up is Jameson Bright. Whenever you're ready.
Hello, my name is Jameson Bright, and I'm currently a junior here at Excelsior Springs High School. I'm here on behalf of my peers to talk about the Northland CAPS program, or yet I say the lack of it. The school advertised the program through an informational presentation that took an hour away from my AP pre-calculus class. During this presentation, the speaker from NCAPS gave me hope that the program could help me decide what I want to do after high school because it would provide a real world, a real world experience that a basic classroom wouldn't provide me. I also submitted my full application, which took hours to complete, and put it in my course request for the next school year, knowing that juniors would get priority over all the underclassmen. This took hours of planning and preparation, but I knew it was going to be worth it here that I was accepted to the NCAPS program as a senior. I was called to the counselor's office on Monday, March 3rd, where I was ecstatic because I knew it has something, it had to be something about the NCAPS program. Then I was devastatingly informed that the school district was withdrawing from the program. This left me in a state of disarray. I was saying to myself about what my senior year would look like now. The program would take, uh, the program would take up four hours of the school day and would have given me a lot of needed credits to graduate. This year, I've taken various college courses to set myself up so I could do this program. My senior year, just to be told that we aren't going to be doing it anymore, right as we were expecting to get information on if we made it into the program. So the news was very troublesome to hear that fateful day. I began asking around the school, talking to students and teachers, yet they had no idea what was going on or what I was talking about. I eventually learned that only those who applied for the program got this information and not parents or teachers knew what was going to happen. We have seen cuts to our education budget before with our art program at the high school. I ask you, why? Isn't the main part of education, isn't the main part of edu- or isn't the major part of a school the education that we students get? We have seen budget cuts happen before, so what's preventing that from continuing to occur in other programs and in other ways to take away from our learning? I hope you all can realize how big of a program this is for students and that we students care about our education. The students I'm talking about are the ones that haven't found their place yet until seeing NCAPS and thought this could be a place for them to find their fit. These students sadly have been disappointed and let down by the school district. They have been led astray from the key part of being in a school, which is learning how to be, how to work with others and become a better person. Thank you for allowing me to speak here and advocate for mine and many others' academic careers. I still believe in this community, this school, and I believe you guys will do what is right.
Alright, can I go up to Cameron Wansing?
Am I good? My name is Cameron Wansing, and I'm here today because Northland CAPS has made a huge impact to my life. Cutting its budget would take away an opportunity that so many students need. Before NCAPS, I thought I wanted to go into marketing, but after working hands-on with businesses, managing their marketing, and later reviewing loans at the Clay County Economic Development Council, I realized I was more drawn to finance. The program exposed me to real work experiences I wouldn't have gotten in a standard classroom, helping me discover my passion for financial analysis. This is a level of career clarity that most students my age don't have. This program didn't just teach me how to shake hands or use Excel. It immersed me in real business environments where these skills were essential, not just lessons in a classroom. I had to confidently present marketing strategies to actual clients, network with professionals who could impact my future, and apply Excel for financial analysis, not just hypothetical assignments. These hands-on experiences gave me a level of preparation and confidence that I wouldn't have gained through a standard class or even many entry-level jobs. One of our most, one of the most valuable parts of the program was hearing from guest speakers who helped us find our why. Some professionals told us they were 50 years old and still didn't know their purpose. NCAPS gave me that clarity now, not decades later. Future students deserve the same opportunities I've had. Northland CAPS has given me an advantage in life, and I urge you to continue, to continue supporting it. Thank you. Also, I would like to speak on behalf of Mason McLaughlin. Hello, and I'm Mason McLaughlin, and I'm a senior at Excelsior Springs High School. Northland CAPS has shaped my future in ways I never expected, and cutting its budget would take away opportunities that students truly need. Like many high school students, I wasn't sure what career path I wanted to take. But NCAPS gave me hands-on experience and real-world exposure that helped me discover my true passion. I learned professional skills that go far beyond the classroom. How to network, advocate for myself, conduct interviews, and collaborate with businesses. These lessons didn't just prepare me for my college, they prepared me for life. I was, one of the most valuable aspects of NCAPS is the opportunity to work with professionals and gain experience in fields we might never have considered. Through internships and projects, I've been able to apply what I've learned in a real-world setting. I also earned college credit, secured scholarships, and built a network of connections that will help me throughout my career. These are opportunities that traditional high school courses simply don't provide. This program hasn't just impacted me, it's also changed my sister's life. She initially wanted to be a pediatric nurse, but after an internship at a veterinary clinic, she realized her passion was animal care. Now she's two years away from becoming a veterinarian. As for me, I've been accepted to Mizzou to study nursing and work toward my goal of becoming a neonatal nurse. Without NCAPS, we wouldn't have had the clarity of opportunity that led us to these careers. Northland CAPS isn't just another class, it's a program that gives students real-world skills.
Good evening, and first of all, happy board appreciation month. So thank you for everything that you do for the community. Um, it's a pleasure to be here this evening to talk about my, um, my favorite place on earth, you know, the happiest place on earth, um, Elkhorn Elementary School. So, um, I'll start off first of all with just our building goals. So we have a goal for reading, for math, and, um, for client, uh, client, for, uh, climate and culture. And for reading, we would really like to see, um, our proficiency, um, for grade level proficiency grow to 70%. And in math, we would like to see it at 75%. Um, as far as, um, the climate and culture, we really want to keep our, um, discipline referrals down and really make sure that our attendance is high. So that's kind of our focus at school. And then the agenda this evening, I'll go over, um, some academics, some climate and culture, and then end with some school improvement um, and leadership, um, for you to understand kind of the way that we do things. So first of all, um, academics, this year we have really focused on four, um, rigorous and, and very effective instructional strategies. Um, some of them were district initiatives, so we were, um, able to provide some PD. Um, but we focused on, um, no opt-out, um, fishbowl, and, um, to really kind of a, um, favorite one that everybody likes is our smart start, which is when we really focus on engaging children from the moment that they enter a classroom. Um, whether that's a transition from PE class or to how to start the day successfully each day. Teachers have worked really, really hard this year to align, um, our curriculum and our standards and really with our assessments. So we've been very mindful, um, to make sure that we are very focused on standards and that children are understanding what it is that they're learning and the pathway to get there. So, um, there's been goal-setting, um, that's been out, one of our building goals this year. And, um, we really begin goal-setting not just with kind of a, a long-term goal, but, um, goals for each lesson that children are learning. So setting the stage, this is what we're going to learn today, and here's a success criteria for you to get there, and then helping kids to be able to monitor their own progress. So we've put a heavy emphasis on small group instruction. We want kids regardless of what level they are on to receive some individualized and some specialized instruction. So whether they're below their grade level or above their grade level, we want, um, students to be able to get that leveled instruction so that they're growing to their own potential. Um, we also have worked a lot this year on science, so, um, PD days and even in some PLC time, we've spent really diving into the, the new curriculum that we have here in Excelsior Springs and our amazing resources. So at first, it was kind of overwhelming for teachers just to have so many things at their fingertips. So we really spent some time diving into that. Um, and now I would say that, um, it's definitely a favorite subject to teach again. So, so I'm really proud of their effort there in science this year. And then, um, lastly is, is that the goal-setting with the, um, monitoring of progress. So with our STAR data, we try to get students involved in where they are and where they want to go and their progress along the way. And teachers have done a great job of giving students the, the visible things that they need, um, to track their progress and graphs that they're creating and charts that they have up in the classroom so that everybody is just mindful of growth that's being made. Okay, and here's some pictures of some engaged students. So on the left there, we have our Battle of the Books, which has gone really well this year. Um, up top there is one of our, um, instructional strategies in first grade, everybody writes. And then the bottom right is a third grade classroom doing fishbowl. And then the middle one there is just music where students are dancing and singing and having so much fun together. Okay, so next I'll kind of talk about our culture and PBIS in the building. So, um, Elkhorn is blessed to have a very supportive community. We have very involved parents that want to support our teachers and our students and work very closely with us. Our events are very well-participated. Um, we have an amazing parent group that support our students, our SOS group. So I want to make sure that I give them a nice shout-out tonight because without them, um, things would be a lot harder for us to, to give some extracurriculars to students. So we, um, this year, we, um, have done a lot with PBIS. We have a very focused team and dedicated teachers that really believe in that framework. So, um, we are going for recognition this year, um, through the Missouri Positive Behavior Support. Um, and it's for our Tier One recognition. So we've done a lot this year looking at our Big Five data, um, to make decisions about how best to support students and teachers for that matter. Um, we offer quarterly incentives and our assemblies, and we do Student of the Month and Attendance Awards and all kinds of things that, um, really boosts the morale. But with our students at Elkhorn, we have the most kind and empathetic students, and it just really gives them another avenue to shine. It truly does. And, um, so some student opportunities that, that we have at, at Elkhorn to really support our positive culture. Um, we have Safety Patrol, our Student Council, Student Behavior Celebration, Student of the Month, Attendance Awards, After-School Clubs and Tutoring, our Outdoor Learning Lab, and our Character Strong Program. So I just wanted to mention a few of those. And here's some pictures here. So our teachers are really getting into it, reading in their animal costumes. And up top there is some Students of the Month. Um, the bottom one is our Student Council and the amazing work they did on our food drive. And then the middle one there is a rotating trophy for the classroom that has the highest attendance each week. So everybody's really proud when they get a hold of that. Okay, and lastly, I'll go over, um, some school improvement things with you. Um, so growth is our focus and monitoring that, that progress is very important to us. We have a very highly functioning building leadership team at Elkhorn. And every month, um, we create our 30, 60, and 90-day action plans that we share out with all staff just to keep us aligned to our goals and make sure that we're, um, on progress and, and making sure that we are where we want to be. And if we aren't, then we have the ability to change our course of action and put different steps in place. So I'm very proud of the work that we do there. Our PLCs are very strong. At Elkhorn, we meet Tuesdays for some planning, and Thursdays is more of our professional learning committees where we look at data and we cycle through kind of reading, math, science, um, and behavior so that we're keeping up with what teachers are seeing in the classroom and being able to offer them the support that they need. Our PD this year has been great. We did some surveys and really worked with BLT to, to make sure that we were giving teachers what they needed along the way, um, just to grow and to meet the needs of our, um, students. But I want to share some data. Um, so first of all, at the beginning of the year, so back in the fall, for our STAR Early Literacy, our kindergarteners were at 68%. In the winter, they dropped to 61%, unfortunately, but I have to say, I checked today and they were at 93% right now. So they've made a huge increase. So very proud of them. They were very, very excited today. Um, first grade was at 75% proficient, and, um, in the winter, they maintained that 75%. And then for STAR Reading, second through fifth grade was at 45% at the beginning of the year. And at winter, we were at 55, being at that, um, proficiency level. And then for STAR Math, um, first through fifth grade, kindergarten did not test at the beginning of the year, so we were at 66%. Then we added kindergarten in the winter and we went to 67%. Um, our attendance, we, our goal is 95%. Um, I'm sorry, Dr. Tomlinson, we're not quite there yet, but we're gonna hope to finish strong. We're gonna hope to finish strong the rest of the school year. Um, our discipline data this year, um, I would like to talk about for just a minute. So last year, we had 22 students, um, with referrals that really required, um, some, some action. And this year, we had 23, but our incidence actually doubled. And I think that our work that we're doing with looking at our behavior data and, and recognizing when students need support through our PBIS program has really led to some of that. Um, so we are, we are much more in tune with how to support children and where their needs are and being able to look through that data and figure out location, time of day, is it a content area, um, things like that. So we're doing a lot better job at monitoring our discipline. And then the last slide I have here, um, our BLT did an amazing book study. We did the Four Disciplines of Execution for Educators. And it really taught us how to set some wildly important goals and monitor those, um, with action steps and celebrations as well as the accountability piece. So we really learned a lot and we're able to share out that learning with the rest of our staff. Couple of the other things there are just, um, we do a celebration wall every week during PLCs and, um, we want to share with all staff the good things that are going on. And then we have a, a data wall in our conference room to show everybody progress by grade level. And then, um, on the right there is just an example of some action steps that we took in February. And that is all from me, so thank you again for, um, allowing me to serve in this very, very special community. And I brought, um, two very special students along. So Carson Marsh and Chance Albertson, would you join me up here, please? These boys are here along with their Student Council sponsor, Ms. Shelby DeHart, and I will let them speak.
I'm Carson Marsh, and I'm the Student Council President for Elkhorn.
Hi, I'm Chance Albertson, and I'm the Vice President of Student Council.
Um, this year, we have an ongoing project that, um, collects Pop Tabs for the Rhonda McDonald House charity. Um, this is somewhere that helps families of sick children and their needs.
In October, in October, we sold Boograms, and because of some generous donations, every student in the school was able to get a Boogram. In November, we collected and donated over a thousand pounds of food for the Good Samaritan Center, right here in Excelsior Springs.
We're current, we're currently holding a coin drop to raise money for some new playground equipment like basketball and tetherball. This has been fun to see the competitive spirit come out.
We are also going to have a card in May for the-
We are also going to have a card in May for the teacher appreciation where they can choose some snacks and other goods, goodies.
First of all, congratulations because your data looks great. Sounds like things from living.
Yeah, thank you.
I just had a question, like data, your 30, 60, 90 day plan, do you ever share that with parents or like at your SOS meetings?
I do share it at SOS meetings, our steps that we take. And not so much like you just sell it up there, but just where our focus is.
Good.
Yeah.
Good. I think it's important that parents hear that and they can work with us to reach those goals.
I agree.
I'm just curious. And then with the Pop Tabs for Rhonda McDonald House, does someone come to the building and collect those or will you get to take them there?
Yeah.
You take them there?
Yes.
That is a phenomenal experience, especially if maybe your Student Council representatives get with you. It is a wonderful, wonderful facility for families that have to go through that. So thank you for what you do.
Yeah, thank you.
Hi. I didn't bring any cute kids with me. I have 2,500 of them. So I wanted to talk a little bit about our APR reports. And as you know, the state comes out with everything just in time to make some real decisions in real time. This is last year's APR that we're talking about. So just kind of adjust, what's that? Can you not hear me? I'll just, no, no. No battery, no battery. Yeah, do you just want me to speak louder? He's got it. He's got a backup. There's no pressure. Every single person here is watching. I'm gonna speak loud. Yeah, I'm gonna speak loudly. It's gonna be fine. Here, you may as well take this. Yeah. Okay, hi. We're gonna talk about APR. It stands for Annual Performance Report. I know that everybody's overrun with acronyms, so this literally is basically like how we are graded as a school district by the state. Oh, I gotta wait for you, honey. You're my swallower. Don't be sorry. I can do this too. You're doing great. So this is kind of a refresher. I've shared with this, I've shared this with you multiple times. APR, MSUP 6 broke this down in two different ways. On the left is our performance score and I'll show you how that's individually broken down. Is this better? Can you hear me better? Okay. To the right is Continuous Improvement Score. This is the new part of MSUP 6 and so I just wanted to go over quickly with you so you kind of know what we're talking about. This is the accreditation score breakdown. As you see, this is kind of our test scores and all of the things that go into how we're performing. So our achievement status, we get 28% of the points for that. It's broken down into status, which is how our kids scored, and then growth. Did they get better than they were the year before? So they're giving us growth points and so when I talk about growth points, I just want you to know that's, it's hard to predict because they're giving you points for getting better. Then you have success-ready graduation rate and your follow-up, which also count for some APR points. And so this is what it looks like when the state sends it to us. So you can see how it's broken down in performance and continuous improvement. So it's got points possible and then the amount of points that we earned. So Excelsior Springs earned 89.5 points out of the possible 140 in that category, right? Or 63.9% of those. So then when you look at continuous improvement, we earned 58 points out of 60 or like we usually get almost all of that points and I'll show you where we missed those in a little bit. So our accreditation points or our APR points total are 73.7%. Just wanted to give you like the quickest possible way I could think of to sum up how they calculate APR because there are mathematicians that really can't figure it out once they, like it is complex. So this is how it's broken down. I'm gonna walk around here and point. This is the performance part at the top and then this below is literally the same thing copied twice. And that gives us our growth points. So looking at that, I tried to make it as easy as I possibly could for everyone to understand. Up at the top, if I circled it in red, it went down from the previous year. If it's green, it went up. If I didn't touch it, it stayed the same, just to simplify it. So we get points for both all of the students and specific student groups. And so that's basically how we're tracking the growth on there. Below that are specifically growth points. So that's based on where we were, which means if we did an amazing job growing last year, it's harder and harder to get those additional growth points the year before. I know that my personal philosophy and principles all believe we focus on growth now. We don't focus really on scores and I'll show you that when I get to some of my STAR data. We try to remove the language even on points scored. It's all about growing everyone. Everyone's an instructional coach. Everyone grows in the district. Also, everyone has to be a reading teacher. We have a lot of requirements. So if you look at this continuous improvement, the only thing we missed on continuous improvement is attendance. So that's something we're continually battling. We got 50% of our points in attendance. I do want to point out that we did get 100% of our annual Secretary of the Board report, so thank you, Lisa. Thank you for your service anyway, Lisa. Okay. So this is really, it's hard to inform our instruction on anything that the state sends us as far as MAP or APR. The main reason is it's so far behind that it's just hard to make any changes. So I am already thinking about what needs to be in place for next school year. I start that around February and I know the principals are already start to thinking about it right now, to usually in March. When spring break happens, we're just going with the flow and thinking about next year and getting the kids MAP tested and all of the goodness that is public education. This is, I wanted to show you some samples of what we have access to as educators through STAR. And this is truly what is informing our instruction and focusing on growth for our kids. So what this one is showing you, and I put my notes on here. One of my big pushes this year and will continue to be over the next two or three years, we're really working hard on our vocabulary skills. It's foundational in reading and that's one of the ways that we can really bring a focus K-12 because everybody's, the more vocabulary you know, the better reader you're gonna become. And as adults, the more vocabulary you have, the better reading reader that you become. But more importantly, you get more vocabulary based on the amount that you're reading. So the only way to build vocabulary for the most part as an adult is just to read more often. Statistically, you're around the same people and you work the same job and you hear the same vocabulary terms all the time. And so go hang out with new friends or start reading more and you're gonna get more vocabulary. If you look over here, how it's broken down, and this is specific to a standard on vocabulary. So the beauty of it is we can look by building or even by student to determine where they're at with vocabulary based on a Missouri standard. So when you look at this, you can see that it highlights which students are in the beginning area, which students are developing and which students have mastered it or they're at a secure spot. So like for example, Cornerstone Elementary here, the median mastery, meaning if you hit the middle of that complete bar, is 88%. The reason that this is important is this really is a good way for me to dictate where are we on a specific standard. So each building for the most part has chosen three reading standards and three math standards and so this is how they track those as well. Our teachers were a really big part in choosing those top three in their buildings. So if you look at this one, this is a sixth grade example. And really what I wanted to highlight on this is that, see the difference between the two standards? So it's pretty easy for a teacher to know like where they should spend their time on and where they should probably move on. Does that make sense? So on this one, these are both reading standards. You can see that the students have a greater view in the top one than they do on the bottom one. That doesn't necessarily mean that the kids have mastered everything and you don't have to come back to it. Nothing works that simply in reading. But it informs the teacher really where they should be spending their time to meet the needs of the majority of their students. There's also a report that a teacher can run and it highlights within a standard, it says cover these things is how you're gonna reach the majority of your students. So this assessment does more than just tell you how smart a kid is. It literally identifies for a teacher, this is what you need to work on in order to make that kid grow. So it's been huge with, it's gone beautifully with reading success plans and written wisdom. It's just really brought everything together so we can identify what a kid needs and meet their need. So next over here, this is reading overall. So these are growth points and I told you that we like to see growth points as opposed to who's scoring well and who's not scoring well. This is going to be a big generalization, but for the most part, like there's a million ways to disagree with this, but for the most part, you're looking for 50 growth points to get a year of learning, for the most part. So when I pulled this in January, you can see that the majority of schools, with the exception of the middle school, are about halfway there, which is right where they should be, right? So those are kind of the quick checks that I do to kind of determine where we're at as a district. So projected MAP performance data, I think I've mentioned this before. STAR does a very, very good job of predicting like how many kids will score proficient in advance. They do a very good job. What we have found is that kids aren't as nervous when they take the STAR test as they are when they take the MAP test and there's a lot of anxiety that goes into that score. In addition, there's a lot of technology issues with being able to answer the questions accordingly with the MAP. And so it does make it go, it's a little bit off, but for the most part, it's very, very predictive. Jill actually reached out with a great question. She identified this in her board packet and reached out and it's an awesome question. She's like, why does it say that, you know, we haven't tested so many kids? And the reason behind that is that reading's broken down into two tests. K1 takes early reading and then the rest of the kids, which is about two-thirds of them, take the reading test. So that's why it looks like you're missing a third of your kids. They were all tested within there, but you have to pull a separate report for that, which Dr. Harris did when she shared that with you. So again, these are quick ways that we can see kind of where we're at throughout the year so I don't have to wait until December to find out what things we need to put in place. This is probably the most amazing part of STAR. These are data points throughout the year and this is specifically a kid in reading. So at the top, the green line there is the pathway to proficiency, meaning that a kid needs to be there in order to be a proficient reader. The black line follows how they're actually doing. So you can see that the kid was far below basic when they started, not anywhere near close to proficient. Then the teacher got him going. Not a lot in there, but with the changes that were put in place, whether it's an intervention, whatever changes were put in place, it's working. By the end of the year, this kid may not be proficient, but I think that this tool allows a teacher to see the growth that they're doing in the classroom that they ordinarily wouldn't have gotten credit for just from looking at MAP scores. So I always, I mean, I lovingly say, and it just sums up, this is what Excelsior Springs teachers do. They, this is how far, this is what they can do in a calendar year with a kid. So that far and away, I think, sums us up more than anything as a district and that sums up who our teachers are. So just really quick, I wanted to talk about some things moving forward that we're working on just from a CNI standpoint. I've already presented the MAP data to you the last time I was here. Still a huge push in vocabulary, so you're gonna hear a lot about vocabulary. Another thing is as a district, AI is a part of everything and that's probably my next thing is really to look at what place in our educational system does AI play a part in? How are teachers gonna use it? How are students gonna use it? And so next year, it's a goal to kind of form a committee and I'll probably write another handbook. I know how much you guys love that. So any questions that you guys have?
I have a couple of questions. On the student snapshot, I think this is a great visual. Do you share this with the families as well and the students?
Yeah.
Because I think that will just help, I know for my students, I know that seeing that progress outside of just sheer numbers, I think would motivate.
So before, like imagine going to parent teacher conferences and as a parent, you were just told if your kid was reading on grade level or not. Now you get to see how much your kid has grown and they absolutely share this stuff. Parent teacher conferences, I think, are more meaningful now than they ever have been before because I mean, there's data to support what their kid needs and where they're growing. I think teachers are having much better conversations now.
Do only students with interventions receive this or will do all students?
Every student gets one, yeah.
And then you made a mention that students aren't as nervous with the STAR test as they are with the MAP testing and like what is the reasoning for that?
It's a shorter test. It happens more often. It's just less high stakes. They don't make as big of a deal about it. It's just a different testing environment overall. STAR test, or MAP testing is exhausting to a kid. It's two weeks. The teachers are exhausted. The kids are exhausted. They just get fatigued pretty quickly. Because of that, the state's actually moving to what they're referring to as testlets. They've got, I know that Dr. Harris is trying some and she's kind of guinea picking the testlets for her building. And I think Cornerstone is doing one of their grades. But they've split the MAP test up and they're trying to give sections of it throughout the year. There are some good things to that and some bad things to that. One of the things is that you're not giving up two weeks in April, basically to move away from learning at a time, so it's smaller chunks. And one of the other positives, it's not gonna be so fatiguing and just, it's tiresome for a kid to get through that.
For sure. And you made that comment that like maybe there's not as big of a deal made about it. And so are we learning from that because they're, you know, like the testing anxiety piece is like that's real for some students? And like how are we trying to like navigate that to help some of those students that,
Yeah.
beyond the test fatigue, which is also real?
So high stakes testing is just a different kind of thing. Like even if you didn't tell them they were in a high stakes test, they would know that something's a little bit different and a little, it's just so methodical and the scripts that you read and all of the things that you have to do. One of the things that we do to combat that is just what Dr. Harris is doing. We have practice opportunities for them. And then these testlets are literally a MAP-like experience that they're gonna be doing before the actual MAP test. I think our teachers do a fantastic job of trying to curb that before they get to it, letting them know that it's okay and that, that's one of the reasons we let parents know. They have calming time and they, I think we do, the teachers do a phenomenal job and the building principals do a phenomenal job to kind of set it up as stress-free as they possibly can. Anyone else?
Thank you. All right, next up is the superintendent's report. Dr. Tomlinson.
I want to bring a word that we did move the April board meeting. So our next regular meeting will be on April 22nd. So that is different. We had to move that because of the election date and getting it certified. So we pushed that date back to April 22nd. So I just want to make sure the board and the committee are aware of that change. I did want to let you know that we have a meeting set up for next Wednesday with the district leadership team. So that is comprised of administrators, teachers, classified employees. I think this light is on there as well for the board to represent. And so we're gonna talk about a number of things when it comes to salary and benefits and some other issues that are going on within the districts. We have that meeting next week. I also want to get some updates on the end of school. So with our snow days hopefully behind us, we'll say, our last day of school will be Thursday. So with our snow days hopefully behind us, we'll say, our last day of school will be Thursday, May 22nd. The last day for staff will be Friday, May 23rd. It's a little bit different than how it's done before, but because the last day of school is a full day, um, and the way we're trying to make up the snow days is we were going to fall short on our, uh, calendars for our employees. So instead of trying to force them to stay late and get everything cleaned up and signed out and stuff, we're going to count that Friday as a full workday according to their contracts. And then they'll be able to do their checkout and clean up on Friday and be done for the summer. So that, I know that's a big question that's been on people's mind is, hey, winter's the snow days and all this. So as of today, that if we miss anymore, obviously we'll have to revisit that, look at it whenever we have to at the end of the year. So any questions about the end of school, how those work? Um, wanted to give you a heads up that board docs that we use for our, all of our documentation, everything here is going away. It's not going to be supported going forward. And so a new company has taken that over. And so we're going to move to a new platform, uh, with board docs. And so I know Lisa's been working on that, uh, trying to put that together. So I don't know the specifics of the rollout for that, but you'll get some information on how to operate that. She can answer questions with what that looks like. So that'll be happening, is that the summer?
Yeah, they'll start the migration.
Okay, so it's coming up soon. Any questions about that? Um, also I wanted to do a quick update on the, uh, budget. And I know that you, uh, Tracy, you had requested to see a budget kind of update where we are. Uh, I want to focus on, so we've got 71.6% of our revenues realized, about 58% of our expenses. 58% of our expenses is what I'm going to focus on. So there's no one in this room or anywhere in this state that can tell you where their revenues are going to be this year. I can guarantee you that because we don't know where they're going to set the SAT at at the state level. So we don't know what our state funding is going to be. Um, if you had to guess if we're going to get more, the same, or less in federal funding this year, what would you wager? Either the same or less. And it may not even be on time, it may even come later, right? So we're going to have less federal funding, less state funding. And I don't, I don't know how to explain this more clearly. The way the government is changing right before our eyes, we have to realize what's happening is there's going to be less help from the state and from the feds. And we are locally going to have to fund our school district and we're going to have to pick up the gaps. Now, there's a choice to make. You don't have to fund more, but if you don't, then there will be substantial cuts will have to be made. There's just too much money out there on the line between the feds and the state that we could potentially miss out on if that stuff goes away. And just want to give you that warning because that day is coming, okay? So think about that in terms of, you know, how you want to process things. Also, the reason I focused on expenses is because that's something we can control. We know what our expenses are, we know what we planned for the year, we know what budget we had approved. And so we want to track that and make sure that that's going to come in. I will tell you, I'm pretty fiscally conservative, so I did shoot our revenue estimates pretty low this year. If you remember, we started off with a deficit budget. Part of the reason was the uncertainty of the year. I think that's going to play out for us and help us in the long run. Uh, but I can't tell you what those are going to be. I can't predict that. So, um, we're just going to have to wait and see how things turn out at the very end of this fiscal year. Typically, the last two weeks of June, which is when our fiscal year ends, we typically get some very large reimbursements from federal programs and from IDA. And oftentimes we'll say, hey, we got a big, huge check that last week of the fiscal year and we're all happy. And our fund balances jumped a couple of percentages and we're like, yeah, hey, look at us. Um, you know, we don't know what that's going to be this year. So it's an nerve-wracking time when it comes to making budgets. I'm very excited about the expenses. I think that's right on track where we want to be. It's very difficult this year to compare with last year because last year we had over $30 million of money moving through our system because we're building a new elementary. So I had different investment opportunities. Every aspect of our budget gets infiltrated by that $30 million flowing through. So if you take a look at this, the realization of last year, this year, you're like, well, how is it you've got $20 million difference? Well, that's what it is. You have this huge project of Lewis Elementary being built. And that's what factors into a lot of those differences. So it's very difficult to get a comparison last year to this point and us this year. Next year will also be a difficult problem for Dr. Bolmore, uh, and his staff because you still had half a year this year, but we're still paying for Lewis. So about half of that money will be still going through Lewis this year. Uh, and then next year will be your first real solid normal year because you don't have this influx of tens of millions of dollars. So, uh, that would be really important to kind of see. But I'm very encouraged by where our expenses sit. I think we're totally on track to hit everything we have, but we need some luck. We need to get some good returns from the states, uh, their adequacy targets, all the SAT. Whatever the state sets that number at is going to dictate how we're reimbursed for our, uh, daily attendance. And then we also need the feds to keep the reimbursements coming. And we are going to take advantage of trying to submit those more regularly so that if they ever do cut it off, at least we got something in. Uh, but if they cut it off at any point, then we're going to be out. So those are kind of what's on the horizon if you talked about the financial, uh, magic eight ball, to try to figure out how we want to structure things going into next year. Okay? Do you have any questions about specifics on here or? Yeah, mine does that too sometimes. I don't even know why. Darn watches. So other than that, I feel like, I feel pretty good about it. Um, I've had initial conversations already about next year's budget with some of our principals, some of our directors. Um, and everybody's very mindful about what's going on. Everybody's trying to maintain very similar budgets. Oftentimes they'll have one additional ask, hey, I can run off the same budget this year, but man, I really need to add this. What do we say? Hey, we'll get for you, don't we? Yeah, you know what I'm talking about. We're still working on hers right now. So if something needs to get done, we're going to get it done, okay? But at the same time, we do hold everybody accountable to say, hey, you've got a budget, you've got to live within it. Uh, if you make core choices in October, don't cry to be in March, right? Just that's, wait till the next year and ask what plan it was. So, um, other than that, uh, that kind of sums up where we're at financially. But, uh, I think you can get a good idea for, we're tracking really well this year.
Any questions? All right. Next up is approval of health insurance.
You may not believe this, but this is my favorite topic to discuss. I don't know why, I'm an odd person like that, but I love health insurance. Um, so we're a member of a consortium, the MEUHP. There's about 100 school districts in Missouri that are in this health insurance group, okay? Um, it's a self-insured program. So what that means is, um, we set our own rates. And then if we make money, we can be able to pool that and build it up. And that helps us buy down rates in future years. If we have a poor year where we're unhealthy or we have a high loss ratio, uh, then we have to owe money. Well, I'm going to tell you right now, we had a bad year, we owe money. So every school district in the consortium, um, has an assessment they have to pay. Ours came out to $197,261. 197, so almost $200,000 assessment that we have to pay. My recommendation to the board is that what we should do is agree to sign up for MEUHP again for next year and then pay it upfront. If we pay it upfront all in full, they'll give us a 10% discount off of that, which will bring the bill down to 177,000. We save about $20,000. It's definitely my recommendation that we save the 20 grand, okay? In addition to that, when we sign up for them for next year, there will be a rate increase of 4.98%. So that's a universal increase of, so our health insurance is going up basically 5%, okay? Now, what's important is there's two different ways you can do this as a group. So the MEUHP could have not given an assessment and just give a, a rate increase. So in order to have a rate increase that would generate that kind of money, you're talking in the twenties. We're talking a 20 to 25% increase in health insurance. Instead, I actually like this opportunity better because what the district can do is we can pitch in that 180 grand, 177 grand. And what that does, it buys down how much increase the organization has to have. So we're kind of, the district is paying for the employees to have a smaller increase. Does that make sense? If we didn't do the assessment, we'd have a 20% increase to all of our premiums. Since we pay the assessment, we only have a 5% increase. Now, the way the budget currently sits, that 5% will most likely be passed on to staff. And they'll say, well, why aren't you guys helping out at all? I just want to make you know that we did, we put in $177,000 to get it down to that amount. Health insurance is not going to get cheaper, it's not going to get easier. Um, we will continue to have eroding, uh, benefits available to our staff in order to keep the premiums lower. So you'll see there's always they're chipping away at little things. They're taking away some prescriptions, they'll take away certain hospitals or certain systems. You'll have smaller networks. We look at that every single year to try to build the best possible health insurance program that we can. And this year we just had an unhealthy year. And when you're self-funded, you always take that risk. There might be some years where we have really good years and we're banking money where we'll all have a zero. I think maybe three years ago, three and four years ago, we had 0% increases two years in a row. Um, and that's great, but you're never going to be healthy all the time and things happen. And our districts, our district had a poor year last year. We had some illness and some disease with some very serious for our employees. But thank goodness they had insurance to take care of them. So that's, at the end of the day though, we have to generate enough money in our health insurance program to pay the bills. And that's what this will take. So I'm happy I can speak about this for hours. I actually do love this stuff. I'm just weird like this, but, uh, I'm happy to talk about. What I'd ask from the board is approval to, uh, rejoin MEUHP next year with a rate increase of 4.98%. And we'd make an early payment of $177,500, 177,535, uh, so that we can save that 20 grand. And I would ask you to the board to, can you go back a little bit? Garrett, can you go back a little?
Go back one slide maybe?
So?
No, back. There, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. So that kind of summarizes it right there, but, um, I will tell you that we took a look at other options. We, we worked with Bill Griffey and we talked to everybody we could possibly find or talk to to say, hey, can we do better? Is this a good time for us to look elsewhere? Um, we probably, between the two of us, probably talked to seven different places. Um, and not a single one of them would bid us. We didn't get a single quote from one of them, not a single one wanted our business because of our loss ratio last year. So with health insurance, if you have a high loss ratio, it means you have a lot of claims. People look at you and they go, I wouldn't do it for the way you're priced you're getting now. I would do it for like 30% more. But they're not going to waste their time with a 30% increase when they know we're getting a five. If that makes sense? So the best time to leave and change health insurance is when you're healthy. Don't wait till you're sick, it's too late, nobody wants you or they're going to gouge you. So my recommendation's going to be, uh, we're going to be very particular about what offerings we have to our employees and what those premiums generate. And then if we can, knock on wood, have a healthy year next year, maybe that's the time to take a look, reevaluate. How did the, how did the MEUHP come through it? How are they doing as a group? How are we doing individually? And we can work with Bill to come up with other quotes and opportunities moving forward, but we really don't have those this year.
All right, so we have a motion to approve joining, rejoining, I guess, MEUHP for next year and making a one-time payment of 177,535, 10% discount.
Still moved.
First by Kayla. Second by Jill. Any questions for Dr. Thomas?
With our, um, group health line item only being at 52% realized today, is there an accounting practice of which we can do for that 177 to land on the books this year? Or does a half land on the books for next year?
No, half will land on the books right now. Yeah, it'll happen right now.
And then that creates enough space for us to finish off the year with the difference?
It'll be tight. But it'll be close. But we're going to manage to.
But it, it also creates space for us for next year, potentially.
Potentially.
If we're, if we're fronting it now. Likely we would front it again next year.
Well, hopefully we will have to.
Okay.
Right, so this is something that only happens when they're having cash flow issues or they're having a bad year through the whole system. So I, again, three, three years ago, four years ago, we did really well. We had 0% increases, but this year we weren't lucky. We have a lot of illnesses that eject the prices out. Next year, if we are healthy, then we should have even lower increases going forward because of the illness.
And we have the room in the budget right now to do it for this year, for to land on this year's book.
We do.
And if we don't, if they don't have cash flow issues, then we may not have to pick it up on next year's book.
I would say we probably have been for six, seven years. Nan's first year, second year.
It was my first, so I think.
But, yeah, so in the time we've been in this consortium, we've had two assessments.
Yeah.
Is all. And then, so this time and then four years ago.
About four years ago is 200, I think it was 220,000, four years ago or five years ago.
Yeah, somewhere in there. But we've only had two in the entire town in there. And when this started, when they started telling us there was going to be an assessment, they were talking about a 600 grand addition. So it's came down. So, but yeah, it's only been a couple of times that we've had this assessment.
We don't plan for it.
When, if you get a lot of districts with six years.
It wasn't locked into the budget that you have on there right now. But there's, it appears that there's going to be space for it, but I don't know how the year finishes.
Correct. But I think we're going to be fine with this. Honestly, this number is very favorable to us. I can't get into a lot of specific discussions that I had, but we did very well with this. Um, and it's really our only option for next year, so it's not like we have a choice. Uh, but it is important for our people to understand that we need to have a good year or it's going to become really difficult for us. It's a big strain. This is the second biggest line item on our budget after salaries, so it's a big deal.
Prescription's the big thing.
Prescription's gone up like 40% trend. Uh, we're only seeing a very, uh, a single digit actually trend on, uh, health insurance right now. It's not the health insurance prescriptions, 40% increase. Uh, and it's a lot of the, I don't know if you've ever watched television? You guys still watch like normal TV where they actually have commercials? Every other commercial is a prescription of some kind. Like I sit there and go like, do I need that? But, uh, yeah, they're just very expensive. A lot of these cost over a thousand dollars a month. And we're doing an insurance program that, you know, $600 a month. So that means that person's losing $400 every year, every month. So, uh, but we'll get there. I feel a bit about it, honestly, I think we're going to be okay.
All right, any other questions, comments? All right, we have a first and a second, all those in favor? Opposed? That passes five to zero. All right, next up is the discussion of the Northland Caps Program, Dr. Thomas.
Okay, this is a, really we're looking for some guidance from the board. Um, historically, we've usually had single-digit students, um, request to go in the caps program. So budget-wise, we put together $40,000, which would ascend, uh, pay for 10 kids to go for the year, okay? It's about $4,000 per student per year. So 10 students would be 40 grand. This year, there was an influx of more students applying for it. Uh, I think it was 19 or 20 applied. That would double the budget that we have set up for caps. So we've got to make some decisions moving forward when it comes to our budget. And that is, do we want to increase the number of students in caps and double that budget? Do we want to maintain the current budget and cap it at 10 students? Or do we want to set it at a different number for whatever reason the board may have? Um, that's really the direction that we're looking for. It just comes down to, we did not feel comfortable doubling a budget for that kind of money, that's about a teacher's salary, to, without your guys' input.
You're not talking about getting rid of the program completely? That is not something we're doing, right?
Uh, not at this time, no.
And out of all of those children, what did they have to do to get into that program? How were they accepted?
They have to apply. They have to apply to the program. And first they have to apply just to get into caps and then they have certain programs that they're interested in, right? So, and then depending on those individual programs, some of them have more students requested. Like the medical one is very difficult. They have the most amount of students who try to get into that program. So that one's the most selective and the most difficult ones to match too. And I think either 11 or 12 of our 20 students are looking to go to the medical.
I think it's 12, right?
So, so that'll depend on whether or not they get acceptance into that. But what we have to do as a district is we have to decide, are we going to support all 20 people wanting to go to caps? Uh, in order to do that, we'll have to double that budget and then take that money from someone else's budget. And that's where that decision is.
When the board first decided to join Northland Caps, was there ever discussion of like, we would limit the number of students? That would be admitted into the program? I wasn't on the board and wasn't around in the district at that time when we adopted it.
I don't know that there was a hearth cap established, other than it was a, we were saying, hey, we can fund up to 10 kids going. Honestly, most years we've never had 10. Most years, we had like three or four maybe go. It's a difficult program because, for some students, because you have to provide your own transportation. There's certain requirements where some students aren't able to participate. But if we have enough students who want to go, the question is, do we want to allocate resources for as many as who want to go to go? Do we want to set a number? Do we want to cap it a number?
When we, when we joined, Northland Caps gave us, this is how many slots.
They gave you a number, so you weren't able to determine that.
And as other districts don't fill or back out of the program, then that allows more slots. And I think that's what happened this year was some schools backed out, didn't send their allotted slots, and then Northland Caps calls and says, hey, we've got 10 slots for you guys who want it.
So they do have the space for us if we did say okay for right now?
Yes, but there are, I can't say everybody's the same because each program's a little bit different, but yes, they will take every student that we are willing to support financially. They'll take all of them in and give them the first opportunity so they have spots to go.
And I was told that if they, the medical students, if there wasn't enough spots for them, they could choose something else, right?
Well, we're doing some local things as well, so we also have some internships available that our high school has been starting. So we're going to try to focus on even more and more opportunities about keeping kids here in town instead of sending them out to North Kansas City. So, so that might be a somewhat competing program we have locally, but it's also just started and it's growing, so I'm sure Dr. Wickham has ideas about how to service all of those students and their needs.
Have we missed any deadlines yet?
No, no. In fact, we've had, I've had conversations with them and, you know, they've been working with us and they said, hey, we'll do what we need to. They've been really easy to work with.
I think it's a great program and we should support our students that want to go to it. I mean, especially with federal funding, I mean, possible, not, not to be scary or anything, but Department of Education, if it's done away with, it's harder for students to get student loans to go to college. I mean, if they have a better idea of what they want to do before they go to trade school or they spend that money on college, I think we should give them that opportunity.
So was it just like a miscommunication issue that we offer that many spots and we normally only do 10?
I think there's multiple things happening, right? I think, for one, that other school districts didn't take up a lot of their slots and we've never had a situation before where there's, they'd come back to us and said, hey, we've got an extra 10 slots here for more of your kids. And I'm sure that the people at our high school were like, oh my gosh, more opportunities. This is great. Let's keep going, going, and going. And at some point, I'm sure they reached out and said, oh, how are we going to pay for all this? This is racking up a little bit. And I think that's when everything kind of ground into a halt. And everybody's like, wait a minute, what are we doing? How are we doing this? And so we said, oh, you know what we need to do? We need to have a, bring this up at the board meeting and have a discussion and get some direction on if we want to support all of it, if we want to go back to how it started, we request eight with 10, or if we want to go to five or 15 or whatever the number is, doesn't really matter. I think long-term, it would be better for us to set a cap number that we are shooting for. Whatever number that is, we could say it's 15 between the two, we could say it's 12. But the budgeting standpoint is going to be more and more difficult financially. I, if it were me here next year, I would say I would want some kind of a cap for budgeting. And then we can always look at onesie, twosie exceptions if we have those. I mean, last year, we, it was the same thing. I think we ended up with 11. We have one extra one, but like, go ahead and go. So, but when it doubles, that's a little different.
How many do we have for sure that want to go this year?
19 that I know of.
And it would just be their, for their senior year? Is it for, we're talking, some people will need to go for two years?
Some people. And the other thing too, another misconception was people who are going to be in their second year of a two-year program, they were always in. That's not who we were talking about. This was always going to be for new people.
How many of the?
20, it was 20.
17 new students would be in a two-year program? Two. So my, this is what I would recommend we do. I don't ever want to see students penalized, okay? You guys did the work to get accepted. And I think it was, wherever the communication on loss, I think it was, hey, here's 10 more slots if you want them. High school counselor doesn't know that we've only budgeted X dollars in the annual budget for caps, so she fills them because that's her job is to fill them and give you the best opportunity. And then when we get the invoice, it's like, holy crap, we didn't budget 40 grand or 80 grand, we budgeted 40 grand. So what my recommendation would be is we allow the students that were accepted this year to go for the two, and then we revisit it with the budget in June as to recap it at 10, recap it, whatever that number is. And then for those students that will have a second year, they'll be beyond that, that makes sense?
That's where I was going with that. So are we saying all 19 to 12 students?
Yeah, whatever it is this year that's been accepted, we let them go.
And then revisit it when we know what the budget looks like and budget.
And then we put a cap on it, a X.
And I think we need to be very careful about how information is shared with students. Like, we need to make sure that parents are informed and that, I've come to the conclusion a long time ago, probably 50% of what you read on social media, because I think a lot of our feelings could have been avoided.
Yes.
And most of us are really, that's why we're on the board. We want to support students and we want to support staff.
But we're also not going to include it on social media and believe that be the right thing. We have to get our facts.
Yeah. So I appreciate that we had a discussion right here in open session. I appreciate the two gentlemen. That took a lot of courage to get up here because that is the fullest our board meeting has been in a long time. So thank you for, you know, going that extra mile to do that too. I appreciate that. And I think it's a worthwhile program, just like our career center. And maybe that's another thing we need to do too, is when we're looking at Northland Caps, what are some programs, and I'm not that familiar with it, you guys are the experts, but what are some similarities of options that we have at our career center that students can take advantage of too, that maybe we're not able to get into Northland Caps?
Or vice versa. You could get into the career center.
Same. And the internships. I think that's great. I mean, I've got a daughter graduating college, it took her five years because she started and had no idea what she wanted to do. So I appreciate Northland Caps and Career Center.
So did anybody else have a recommendation or any thoughts?
For you guys, Steve.
Right now, it's 310 or what is it?
Well, I don't know that there is a GPA.
They don't have any, anything like that?
I mean, they've been, they've been sitting in the program, but anybody can apply to be in the program.
In distance. Because we do not provide transportation for them.
No, we do not. But when we, but when, if we decide to put a cap on it, we can put some academic rigor too. We can say, you've got to have a GPA of this and an attendance rate of this or, you know, we can add to above and beyond what Northland Caps has.
Yeah, but for this year, I think like it's appropriate for us to proceed with the, with the students that get accepted as long as their, their, those seats are still available at the cap center for them or Northland Caps for them. And I think that we all learned a lot through this process and I think it's just important that we slow down a little bit and make sure that we are considering all factors before we just jump. I think we all, it just goes without saying, we all learned a lot through that.
Good enough, guys?
Yep.
Okay. Comments, questions on?
I think it's great. All right. Like Mr. Watson over here, he decided he wanted to get into the financing and stuff like that originally, maybe real estate or something like that. I currently have a caps kid in the mornings, so I've got to be a little late in the mornings. But, I mean, and she's learning if she really wants to do this. And I took her around town and, you know, and showed her different businesses and, I mean, she's open to those too, so.
I do think it's important to not blur the line between the Excel Supreme Career Center and Northland Caps and our internship program, all of which offer great benefits for students. And when we have to get to a place where we might have to make some decisions, we do have a lot of offerings out there and we need to like look at it holistically.
Do you have any emotion?
No, no. I just want to, that's superintendent, you don't want to sit there and double a budget just because you do it and then you have to go back to your board and explain why you're doing that, so when you already have a deficit budget. I would rather have this conversation upfront than we make a decision together and then move forward. It's just a better way to approach that.
All right. Here we go. All right. Next up is approval of admin staff reduction. Dr. Tomlinson?
As you know, Mr. Baker, who was an assistant principal at the high school, was named our activities director. And in doing so, anytime we have an opening in the district, we always have a conversation of, now what? Right? We never simply just open it and say, well, person left, open it up, hire a person, move on. It's never like that. So we wanted to be cognizant, say, okay, is this a position we need? Is this a position we have to have? Or is this something that we could move forward without? And we felt confident that we could take on all responsibilities without refilling that position and thus by cutting that spot. We've done a couple of different things. I would say, the way the central office administrator salaries are set up for next year, they're going to be about 30 to 40,000 dollars less than they were this year. And then you'll have an additional savings from the assistant principal. You're talking about 150,000 dollars of less money going towards admin next year than went this year. So, but we're going to reduce something that that's, that visible. We always bring those to you when we ask if we can hire an extra one. So we want to do the same thing this time and say, we would like to hire one less one this time around and save on the budget.
Are the two assistant principals' workloads going to be?
They will increase.
Increase, I mean, are they going to be okay handling that?
Well, we've done it before. We've had two there before. So will it be a stretch? Yes.
Can't we be here for Dr. Baker?
I'll tell you, the high school is not excited about this. It's a lot more work for them.
How does it impact students? Because like I know that it's going to create more work for the, for Dr. Wickham and for two assistants.
Yes.
And then what, what, what's the negative impact? And like, I'm sure there's not a positive, there may be a positive, like what are those as it relates to students?
You know, anytime you have admin, here's what admin helps with. Admin take things off of other people's plates, right? So if a teacher's having a difficult time with a student, it's an admin that sits there and works with them outside of the class and tries to get them refocused to get back in the class and keep going, right? So if you don't have as many admin working, then teachers are going to have to take on some more responsibilities. They are. The other ones are going to have to pick up, you have evaluations, so they try to do, you know, five to seven teacher evaluations every year on every staff member. Now that's split up amongst three people instead of four people. You know, but we've got some ideas and some ways to help maybe shift some different things of what the activities director is doing to help out a little bit. But for the most part, it's going to fall on the shoulders of the other initiatives that have to do with it.
And we made a decision recently to go into a new conference, which is going to increase the hours for their supervision as well, likely?
I don't believe so, no. I don't think it will.
Do you think they would say the same?
I do. I think once they see their schedules, they'll understand it. But think about this, we already play all of the MEC schools. We already do. So there's no additional travel. We already play them. We're playing them in our non-conference schedule now. All we're doing now is we're making that our conference and then we can schedule our non-con for schools.
Yeah, I don't want to make it about the conference thing again. I just wanted to like make sure we're like thinking about their whole, the whole impact on the.
Whole impact, yep. It's going to be, it's going to be more for them, yes, but it's doable. We've done it before. Other places do it. We don't have to do it. We can hire an extra one. If that's what you guys would like. My, our recommendation is that we don't, we fill it. If you say, nope, do we really want that extra person? I'll post it tomorrow and we'll go find the best person we can.
Are there any administrative pieces of their roles that they do that are incredibly like arduous with data and such and all the extra meetings that they, you know, admin are sitting in often, that can be taken off their plate so they can help the classroom teachers and the students more? Or you don't think so?
I don't think so. To be honest. I mean, it's, they have, it's a difficult job. No one really understands the kind of stuff they have to deal with, the requirements on them. And, but, you know, there's certain people who are just excel at it and that's what they run towards since they want to be. Some people are really good at it. Luckily, we have some of those. But it really comes down to, in a perfect world, you know, you can hire as many people as you want, but this isn't a perfect world.
We've only had three assistants up there.
Last few years, right?
Just in four years. So, I mean, forever, it was just, it's just been the last three or four years.
But we also know in the last three or four years, a lot more has been put on the staff as well.
What was the reasoning?
Well, we had some changes in leaderships. We had different principal come in. I don't know what her name was, but she was, and then we also had, you know, Joe Ryan was leaving and getting out. So we were trying to kind of position ourselves that we weren't, not just have all new people, but also be stressed out. So we thought of adding an additional person with the idea too, that they could grow into something else. So it's kind of worked out for us really well. But it's a struggle.
I think we all understand the sentiment of the save. It's just hard when there are not, like, the whole, the whole education staff is drafted.
It is. And I'm not sure that, you know, the average person at home understands how many more requirements have been placed on the school. It's just like the last year, there was a Senate bill passed to supposedly increase funding for schools, but they had about 15 to 20 additional things they're making teachers in classrooms do as well as administrators do. And then they turned around this year and already didn't fund it. But we still have to do all of those things. So it's, at some point, the rubber's got to be at the road and we have to stop placing more on teachers in classrooms to handle everything in the world and just focus on teaching and learning.
And taking a person out might put more on the teachers in the classroom.
That's right. That's, that's the balance we try to strike, right? But again, this is up for you guys for a vote, so you guys can tell us how you want to go by your vote. Our recommendation would be to not refill the position.
It's going to stay, we don't have a budget, it's like, and we ran off.
It can always be revisited.
We can always hire again. And that's just how I see it, to save money. And come back and revisit it.
I'm going to be honest with you guys, it's, if what we see right now happening with school finance, national finance, these are the types of questions and decisions you're going to have to make on a monthly basis because it's going to get extraordinarily There is a levy up this spring. If that levy passes, that will allow us to at least stay competitive with salaries against our neighbors. If that doesn't pass, you're going to have these conversations a whole lot quicker because they're going to have, cuts are going to come a lot sooner if that doesn't happen because you're not going to have a lot of peer staff.
Well, the Senate bill, 727, if they don't fund it, it's a million bucks to us that we don't get, but yet we've got to do the 19 other things in the bill that they said[1670.62] bill that they said you have to do to get the million. Well, if they don't fund it, you don't get the million, but that's what, you still got to do the nineteen things. So, what do you do? I mean, it's a catch twenty-two.
It is.
All right, entertain a motion to approve the admin staff reduction. First by you.
Second.
Second by Kaylin. All those in favor?
From McCossey.
That's not it?
That's what we're looking at.
And that passes five to zero. All right, our last item on the agenda is our board vacancy. I've got a timeline for you. See kind of how we're going to do this. So, the position will be posted on March twenty-eighth. It will run for two weeks until three thirty. We'll be doing the business day on Friday, April the eleventh. Applications will be reviewed. So, we need to approve the workshop, right?
You don't have, I mean, you can't include it, because this is posted as a discussion.
So, applications will be reviewed at a Board of Education work session on April the fourteenth.
It doesn't have to be approved, though, right?
No, no. At five thirty PM in the boardroom, located right here, so marked down in the boundaries. At that time, we will review all the applications, decide how, see how many we have, do we interview them all, or do we select the ones to interview. And then we will conduct interviews on April the sixteenth and seventeenth if needed.
And that's an open session?
That will be an open session here at the boardroom at six thirty PM. The applicant that's selected will be notified and sworn in on April twenty-second, regular school.
And that is to fill Troy's term, so how long will that term be?
Okay, so that term will be until the next election cycle. So, the appointment runs until April of twenty-sixth. They have to sign up in December of twenty-five if they want to run. And then they'll be on the ballot April of twenty-sixth. They will be on the ballot for a one-year term. So, in April of twenty-sixth, there'll be two ballot issues. One, continue Troy's vacancy for one year. People can sign up to run for that one-year position. And then there'll be the three-year board positions that were normally.
So, if, let's say that applicant, they file in December of twenty twenty-five, can they decide whether they're going to run for the one year?
Yes. They can run for the one year or the three.
Okay.
So, you'll have two. So, if you have, however many, you sign up for the one, or however many, sign up for the three. Okay? That position, well, then again, their term will expire in one year, because that's Troy's term with twenty-seven, so they would have to run again. So, they'll have two years in a row that they are on the ballot.
Unless the second year, they ran for a three-year seat.
Right. They, they found out they really liked it and wanted to do it.
So, it's a lot of campaigning, but, so that's how it is. So, the appointment only lasts until April of twenty-sixth. Okay? Is that clear? We've called the attorneys like five times to make sure we had it exactly right, so fingers crossed at this point. So, everybody got the dates? And it'll be posted on our school's website, correct?
I think not until March twenty.
Yeah, not until the twentieth.
I'm going to say it, because I feel like I sound like a worker record when I do, but if you are going to sign up to run for the Board of Education, please do your research on what you are getting into. I want you to just look into it, talk to us, talk to the pass board members, see if it's something that you want to do. It is not sitting up here for, for two hours once a month. It's just not. It's a lot more that goes into it, and it is volunteers that do this. They're not paid, you don't make money. So, you have to really love kids, you have to really love Excelsior Springs and the district, I think. So, that's just my opinion on it, but make sure you know what you're getting into before you sign up.
All right. That was the last agenda. And this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn. First by you.
Second.
Second by Kaylin. Sergeant Nash, dulled him.
Did you catch a nip happening back there?
Yeah.
Sister's going to bring her pelt.
I asked if I needed to.
I said eight fifteen. All those in favor of the adjourn? And that passes five to zero. Oh, I don't know. I forgot all about it, everything else. Thank you, guys, for coming out. Appreciate it.